I'd like to call Monday, May ninth, 2022, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting in order. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and welcome everybody this evening and those watching at home. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Present.
Commissioner Peel.
Present.
Commissioner Veal.
Present.
Commissioner Rohr.
Present.
Commissioner Billups.
Present.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Present.
Commissioner Graham.
Present.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Present.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Present.
All right, tonight's agenda consists of item one A, the meeting minutes from April twenty-fifth, Planning Commission Meeting. Items two and three, site plan design review and final plat for Blue Springs Aquatic Center. Item four, alternative master sign plan for PepsiCo Distribution Center. Item five, alternative master sign plan for Tacos for Life. Item six, election of officers. Item seven, other business, and item eight, adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda through the approval of the April twenty-fifth, 2022, meeting minutes.
So moved.
A motion for Commissioner Honeycutt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rohr, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries. Next item, items on the agenda is item two and three, SPDR zero four two-two eight-two-three-five, and PF zero four two-two eight-two-three-six for Blue Springs Aquatic Center. And at this time, I ask for staff's presentation, Mr. Mallon.
Okay, can you read that? Okay, thank you, Chair. This is a site plan design review and final plat application for the Blue Springs Aquatic Center, which is located at three oh five and four two five Northeast Mock Avenue. The site covers eight point three-five acres. The aquatic center is proposed to be connected to the existing fieldhouse and will have indoor and outdoor aquatics facilities. The total building addition is approximately thirty-two thousand square feet, with fifteen thousand square feet specifically being constructed for the naterium portion of the aquatic center. The outdoor pool deck portion and slides is approximately fifty thousand square feet and will include a large slide complex, lazy river, zero-depth entry, waveball pool, and surf simulator. The previous actions on the agenda was, city council approved the rezoning for the, for a portion of the properties in February of this year, and these are the two final applications for the property. The, after this, it'll just go to a building permit. Property is adjacent to I seventy, surrounded here by the black and white hash lines. The existing fieldhouse is the blue-green colored roof, as you see here. The pool and clubhouse will be located off to the west portion of the property. Apologize, bringing up the site plan here. As I mentioned, the pool or the building addition will be located immediately adjacent to the existing fieldhouse and the pool and slide complex patio and adjacent seating and lazy river will be even further to the west, towards the Ignite Assisted Living Facility. The proposed site plan design review complies with all of the sections in the Unified Development Code, including landscaping, as amended through this application, setbacks, height, building height, and parking. The applicant has proposed or provided their own parking through a Schedule C, which allows the applicant to determine their own parking count based upon their use. The applicant has, or that Schedule C parking memo recommended, two-hundred-and-sixty-three parking stalls based upon the use, the anticipated users, and the peak hour. The site plan proposes three-hundred-and-fifteen parking spaces, which exceeds the minimum required. In addition, at the time of the general development plan approval, one of the parking lot drive aisles was allowed to be reduced from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet in order to allow for the continuous buffer of landscaping along Mock Avenue. This site plan reflects that approved reduction in that drive aisle width. The applicant is requesting alternative compliance for their landscape plan, mainly due to the site, the fact that it is an infill site that is bounded by the existing assisted living facility on the west and the existing fieldhouse facility on the east, and this is trying to fit a rather large pool complex, outdoor and indoor, onto the site and to accommodate the parking. The, the landscape area is provided, however, the amount of plant units being provided is less than code. But staff, in reviewing that, feels that the landscaping that is being provided, is being provided in the most ideal sit, or locations along the west property line, along the east property line, along the south property line, along Mock Avenue, and trying to fit in all the required plant units in the remaining area. After you add, take out the building square footage, the pool deck square footage and the parking lots, would simply be putting too many plant units on that area, and it's not a long-term viable solution in terms of landscaping, long-term maintenance of the property, and long-term survival of the plant unit. So, in essence, they could meet the requirement, but it would really just be doing it to meet the requirement and not actually being a good, sound landscape plan. So, the proposed landscape plan that they have provided, staff believes, meets the intent of the code by providing landscape around the appropriate portions of the site while not creating a situation for the city staff and the city itself to maintain too much landscaping going down the road. The final plat creates one lot for all of the, to contain all of the improvements and is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat that was approved back in February as well. Staff reviewed the applications and finds that all the review criteria have been met, except with the previously approved deviations such as the drive aisle and the alternative compliant landscape plan. And staff recommends approval of the design review with one condition and of the final plat with three conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions before we have either the applicant or Dennis Dobell with the Parks Department come up and answer any additional questions about the facility. We have all the drawings, the elevation, the site plan, if there are any questions.
Any questions for staff, commissioners? Commissioner Kradoff?
I'm not sure if I should direct this question to you or to the applicant, but will there?
Will there be any special parking site or bus lanes rendered to accommodate school bus capacity for events to, to avoid any dysfunction in parking?
I, I think the applicant would be better suited to answer that, but in just looking at the site plan and, and our review of it, it does look like there is a drop-off portion here, which would be to the, in the middle of the property, which is just south of where the existing entrance is now. The whole entrance is going to be reconfigured, and you'll walk in kind of into the central courtyard area in this location, and then a central lobby or atrium, and then you can split off and go to the, the naterium aquatics facility to your left, or you could go to the fieldhouse to your right. But it does appear that there is a drop-off lane located in this direction here where my hand is. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Chair? Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Mallon, I didn't see a photometric plan in all of the drawings. Is there a plan to do one? I think there was, there was one in there, but it was only for the sun deck. And I was just interested in lights foliage over to, to adjacent properties, especially Saint Mary's location.
Yeah, let me, appreciate the question, let me zoom in here to the site plan real quick. This is the photometric plan. The level of light is denoted in foot candles. The maximum allowed at the property line is point five, point seven-five? Okay, point seven-five for this zoning district. And as you can see here, along the northern property line, there might be a little bit of spillover onto the I seventy right-of-way. However, the, that I seventy right-of-way line is still quite a bit away from the actual travel lane. There's a, a pretty significant landscape buffer there. And then this is the western property line to the Ignite, Saint Mary's Residential Facility. And as I scroll down here, the, the maximum, it appears, is point six in this location, and otherwise meets the, the maximum allowable light at the property line, so there will be no spillover.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? All right, seeing none, and would the applicant like to come forward and add anything else?
I'm happy to run through, if they don't want to, just run through some of the, the site design elements. The, just, this is the proposed building, building elevation. The colored rendering is right here. The majority of the building will be CMU block with pre-cast, or not CMU block, sorry, pre-cast concrete panels with metal panels and composite wood. The building colors will be mostly gray with some blue and orange decorative accents. These are the building elevation, this is the south building elevation here. This looks like to be the north elevation here. This would be the east elevation. As you're looking from, say, Texas Roadhouse across the fieldhouse to the, to the east elevation, you can see the, the side or the slide complex, which would be on the I seventy side of the portion, or a portion of the site. And then this is the west elevation. I would like to point out that I did mention the building height complies with the maximum height requirement. The slide tower, this internal slide tower that you walk up to go into the slide, is allowed to project into that maximum height canopy. The Unified Development Code allows for certain exceptions to project into a maximum height for a zoning district such as staircases, elevator towers, cupolas, ornamental features, towers on the building, things of that nature. So, all of this building does comply with the height requirements for, for this property.
All right. I guess with no applicant presentation, any other further discussion by the commissioners? All right. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on the site plan design review.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
All right, I move that site plan design review, SPDR zero four two-two eight-two-three-five for Blue Springs Aquatic Center, with the one condition, be approved as submitted by staff.
All right, thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion carried with the one staff condition. I would ask for a motion on the final plat.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I move that final plat PF zero four two-two eight-two-three-six for Blue Springs Aquatic Center, with three conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that item be recommended and heard by the city council during Monday, May sixteenth, meeting at six PM. All right, going to item four on the agenda is ASP zero four two-two eight-two-three-two for PepsiCo Distribution Center, and I would ask for the staff's presentation, Ms. Bright.
Before you this evening is a request for a master sign plan for the installation of vehicle entrance signs for PepsiCo Distribution Center at ten fifty Northeast Twenty-seventh Street. The property is generally located east of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street and approximately two hundred feet north of East Jefferson Road. It's zoned light industrial and includes approximately thirty-seven point nine acres. The proposal includes the installation of three ground-mounted directional signs, all of which exceed the maximum height and/or square footage allowed by the sign code. With the addition of the proposed vehicle entrance signs, PepsiCo's entire site will have approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-one square feet of signage. The only thing Planning Commission will be voting on tonight is the directional signage, since all other signs have been previously approved with an administrative sign permit. The sign code only allows vehicle directional signs to be three feet tall and have an area of six square feet. The directional signs from grade are proposed to be seven feet tall. One of the signs is proposed to be six square feet, but the other two will be sixteen square feet and twelve square feet. The signs are proposed to be set back ten feet from the property line, which meets the minimum zero-foot setback for vehicle entrance signs. Staff supports the request since the intended user of the site has a different line of sight than that of a standard vehicle. Therefore, staff feels as though the request is warranted and justified. Also, the signage that contains the verbiage relating to no trucks allowed will only be allowed until there is an extension of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street and/or further development to the west occurs, so then the users can get used to the traffic pattern for the site. Staff reviewed the applications and found that the only code deviations were that the signs would exceed the maximum height and/or square footage. Staff recommends approval of the master sign plan with two conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Would you highlight Twenty-seventh, Northeast Twenty-seventh Street? The extension that's supposed to be completed?
Um, I'm not for sure when it's proposed to be completed, that would be for Public Works, but it is right here, coming off of East Jefferson.
Okay, so is it, is it going to be extended up from there?
Add them or jump?
The construction of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street is complete to the location shown on the plans, basically to the northern property line of the PepsiCo Building. So that was a condition of, you know, that was built during the site development. So that, that is complete, the Twenty-seventh Street is complete.
Okay, so as soon as that's completed, then those, those signs will be removed, the temporary signs?
No, if that street's extended at all, due to any further development, if that's correct, by Public Works.
Yeah, I can, so staff, the, the applicant has asked for these temporary signs to help the truck drivers know to not go past that southern entrance. Staff has concerns with putting traffic signs up that appear to say no trucks going forward, so pass this point. So, at any point, should Twenty-seventh Street get extended up to the north, which is through a property which hasn't even been annexed yet? So that's quite a ways out. The city does envision Twenty-seventh Street connecting in some way, shape, or form up to Duncan Road at some point. What is more likely to happen is that the property on the west side of the street is also zoned, or is, we've had some conversations to potentially annex that into the city and some proposed potential industrial development. And so the more likely scenario is that that will develop first. And so, when that property develops and gets ready to open, then those signs, those no-truck signs would go down because the potential for trucks to go up Twenty-seventh to the north and then turn left or west onto that new development is certainly possible. And so that's why, that was the, kind of the timing of that condition.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for staff? All right, would the applicant like to add anything else?
I care representing them, but I think they've done a great job, so.
Any other further discussion or questions by the commissioners? All right, I would ask for a motion on the alternative master sign plan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the master, the alternative master's, master's sa, sign plan, excuse me. ASP zero four two-two eight-two-three-two with the two conditions.
All right, thank you, have a motion from Commissioner Veal, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Stokkenberry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carried with the two staff conditions. Next item, gentleman's item five, ASP zero four two-two eight-two-three-four for Tacos for Life, and I would ask for staff's presentation with also Ms. Bright.
The last request this evening is for a master sign plan for the installation of a pole sign for Tacos for Life at eleven oh five Northwest Seven Highway. The property is generally located at the southwest corner of the I seventy and Seven Highway interchange. It is zoned general business, plan unit development, and includes approximately zero point nine-five acres. The proposal includes the installation of one pole sign with a proposed reduced setback from what is required by the sign code. With the addition of the proposed pole sign, Tacos for Life entire site will have approximately fif, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight square feet of signage. The only thing Planning Commission is voting on tonight is the pole sign, as all other signs have been approved with an administrative sign permit. The sign code states that the required setback for a pole sign from an interior property line must be equal to the sign's height. This would require a thirty-foot setback from an interior property line, but the applicant is proposing a five-foot setback. The sign does meet all other pole sign requirements, including the allowed square footage of the sign, the height, and the quantity. Staff supports the request since the sign follows all pole sign requirements except for the setback. The site is limited on potential locations due to the fifteen-foot sewer easement location along the front property line and the fact that the site is already built out and is being repurposed. Staff does not feel as though the reduced setback will interfere with visibility or add visual clutter since it is not along Northwest Seven Highway and is directed towards I seventy traffic as required by the sign code. Staff reviewed the applications and found that the only code deviation was the reduction in the interior property line setback. Staff recommends approval of the master sign plan with two conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
That's a double-sided sign, right?
Mm-hmm.
Signage on both, both sides?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yep, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward?
Do you guys have any questions about it, or?
Any questions for the applicant, for commissioners? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Any other further discussion by the commissioners? Okay, then I would ask for a motion on the alternatives, alternative master sign plan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the alternative master sign plan, ASP zero four two-two eight-four three-four, with the two conditions for Tacos for Life.
All right, thank you, I have a ma, a motion from Commissioner Veal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rohr, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, so that motion carried with the two staff conditions. All right, the next item on the agenda is election of officers, and I think before we get, get to it, I think, Mr. Mallon, you were gonna update us on a few of the things that were recently passed, I think.
Yes, of course, thank you. Just wanted to see if, after our last meeting, and we provided the new rules of procedure for the Planning Commission, if there are any questions related to those rules of procedure, and be happy to answer those, and also point out the, the duties and responsibility of the chair and the secretary. It's called the secretary because in the state statute, they refer to this, the secretary and the chair. The Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment are the two only boards in the city where the city council does not, and the mayor with the approval of the city council does not appoint the chair and the vice chair, because under state statute, those board, those two boards, or the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission, are to elect them themselves. And so the chair, the secretary really doesn't have any defined roles in the state statute, so we've just decided that, in our rules of procedure, that the vice chair will serve as a secretary. So, the rule, or the, the role of the chair is to chair, basically chair the meeting, to be the presider of, of the meeting, and the vice chair, as well as signed subdivision plats and, and... I think that's basically it. Chad, you could fill me in, we've got a lot of former chairs up there. And then the vice chair serves in the chair's absence. So, would like to point out also the, again, the attendance, new requirements for attendance for the twenty percent of the regular meetings in the year. Planning Commission does meet as much as the city council does, and so we certainly recognize that that is a big-time commitment for either the chair or the vice chair, and just wanted to go on record saying thank you to all of you again for, for your service and, you know, the, giving up your, your Mondays every other Monday for us and helping us in, serving in that chair and the vice chair role. So, with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions on the rules and procedures, or if there's any questions about the role of the chair or the vice chair before the, that election or nomination process takes place.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mallon before we do nominations?
I guess I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Are the other commissions and boards, are they being changed as well to a certain percentage of absenteeism? Or is that just the planning board, or how did that work?
The, it was split up between boards that have regularly scheduled meetings, such as the Planning Commission, where there is a set schedule of, we know that there's a Planning Commission meeting pretty much every other Monday. So, boards that meet regularly like that have that twenty percent rule. The other boards are called on-call boards, which only meet if there's a certain application or a certain call to be, or call to have the meeting, say, by the mayor or by the city council. So, that twenty percent rule does not apply to those on-call boards because there could be one board meeting a year. You know, so it's, twenty percent only applies to the, to the, the regularly scheduled board meetings.
Thank you, that clarified that.
Okay, sorry.
Was there a question down here, too? Yes, Mr. Kradoff.
I have a question for you, Mike, but it's really not related to, uh, uh, it's related to the capital improvements program you spoke about last week, and I see today is an, an attachment. And I just wanted to ask you about ST-six-one for a capital approvals program in relationship to twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Is there anything elaborated or spoken about, wallet street improvements on, on that capital improvement?
Commissioner Kradoff, could we, could we table that until, we'll do the elections first and then come back to that?
Okay.
And the other business, is that okay?
Sure.
All right. Any, any other questions about the officers' positions and nomination process or duties? Okay, then I would ask for nominations for Planning Commission Chair.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I nominate Chair Sanderson to extend his service into the following year.
So, I think, I think with the new rules, I'm actually not able to, because there's a two, two's term max.
Yes, that's correct, I apologize for not pointing that out, that's kind of an important point. Yes, it's, uh, the chair and vice chair are limited to two consecutive terms unless councilor will allow to say you wouldn't.
Well, I would ask the city attorney to weigh in, but technically those rules only were effective at the last meeting, so my opinion would be going forward, but the city attorney may have a better opinion of that, so.
Well, I didn't, I didn't realize you, this was your second term.
I mean, I think it's effective when the council adopted the rules of procedure, and he is in his second term now.
So does that mean he can't?
Yeah, he cannot.
Okay. I'd, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to let somebody else have an opportunity, if that's, if that's.
Well, I will rescind that nomination, and I will nominate Byron Kradoff as chair.
Very good, thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Honeycutt.
I would like to nominate Travis Graham.
I would, I would defer to Byron, since he has not done, has not chaired before.
Okay.
But I appreciate that.
Any other nominations? Okay, so, hearing your deferral there, I would ask for a motion on Commissioner Kradoff for Planning Commission Chair for twenty twenty-two.
So, he's been nominated, so you can just take a vote?
Oh, is that, is that considered, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, okay. So, we have a, I guess, looking for a vote for, yeah, Commissioner Kradoff as Planning Commission Chair for twenty twenty-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Commissioner Kradoff. Very good, and then now it moves to asking for nominations for Planning Commission Secretary, or effectively the vice chair.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
I nominate Commissioner Tom Rohr as vice chair.
Commissioner Rohr. Any other nominations? All right, so, voting on Commissioner Rohr for Planning Commission Secretary or Vice Chair for twenty twenty-two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good, congratulations. All right, now, move to other business, Mr. Mallon.
Yes, we have the community development monthly report for April. Bear with me for a second here. So this is the monthly report for April twenty twenty-two. Building permit activity, our single-family detached permits, which is kind of a bit, big barometer of kind of the health of our single-family industry, is, is about half, maybe a little over half of where it was last year. So that's been down. Our overall total dwelling units through the year twenty twenty-two compared to last year is significantly higher because of the multifamily units we had that have been approved. I think, just my read on, on the market and why we're seeing so many single-family detached housing permits through this year is that a lot of the builders have built out their subdivisions that they've been building. Summit Homes has kind of finished over near Lakeside at Chapman Farms, and it's, those types of builders have been trying to pick up new land and getting that land entitled and zoned, and they're out constructing all the infrastructure in the streets and the water and sewer lines now.
water and sewer lines now. And we've had a number of final plats come through over the past maybe six months, and we have a number that we think will come through in the next three to six months as well. And so once those final plats get recorded, those lots can be sold and the builders start putting the houses up. So even though we're down through April of this year, we do expect that number to start to creep back up. And single-family permits last year were really kind of at a good pace, so even though we're low now, I think we're gonna see some more permits in that category uptick over the next three to six months. Overall, building permit activity in terms of total building permits is on par with where we were last year, 436 versus 447. Our commercial building permit activity has been about the same, maybe a little bit higher than it was last year through the first four months of the year, 1.3 million square feet in 2022 compared to 1.1 million square feet in 2021. The commercial valuation of that construction cost has been almost double of that, so a little bit more square footage, but a lot bigger projects with a larger construction As you can see in the graph here, the difference between 2021 and 2022 in the single-family permit numbers are between half and three-quarters of what they have been over the past year. Code enforcement activity continues to be pretty steady in terms of our overall cases opened, 127 in April, as compared to last year. March, April's getting back up to where we were last year. March was a little bit lower than in previous years. I'm kind of beginning to think April was our wettest month versus March of last year, and so the rains come, the high weeds and grass come, and all the other types of spring code violations that we typically see, maybe starting in March, I think because of the delayed winter are happening in April of this year. The most common code cases, again, are the nuisance inspections, citizen complaints, trash, and then again, due to our rainy April, the erosion and sediment control. That is the transfer of mud and dirt across property lines. It's not the transfer of water across property lines. Water is allowed to run across property lines. This is where a builder may not have put up the silt fencing or other kind of measures to prevent the transfer of mud on an undeveloped site when it rains heavily, and that mud kind of washes across property lines. So, due to the heavy rains that we've had in April, that number is expected to be at about that level. That was a new code amendment that we put in within the last three years, so we will continue to see that, and just kind of anecdotally speaking, when we have a big rainy month, the number of complaints that we get that go through our codes department dramatically increases, especially in subdivisions where you have some homes that are finished, that are adjacent to homes that are still under construction. Planning activity and subsequent action by City Council. Universal Auto was approved by City, by Planning Commission, subsequently approved by City Council for both the rezoning and the conditional use permit. The Unified Development, or Code Text Amendment for the review and decision-making bodies, which was part of the boards and commissions stuff that we discussed earlier, approved by Planning Commission, subsequently approved by Council on April 18th. The All About the Outdoors General Development Plan, approved by Planning Commission on April 11th, was subsequently approved by Council on the 18th. The Swim Things Site Plan Design Review was a site plan design review with alternative development standards. That was approved on April 11th with the removal of the condition to put in the sidewalk along 40 Highway. That, that specific condition being removed has been appealed to the City Council, and that will be heard this week, next week, sorry, I was gonna say this week. That'll be heard on May 16th. So that is not an appeal of the entire approval of Swim Things with the alternative development standard, but an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to remove that condition of approval that staff had in there to require the sidewalk along 40 Highway. Subsequent other cases, the Edgewater second and third plats were approved by Planning Commission, subsequently approved by City Council, and that is it for those activities. And then the sign permit activity continues to be on par with where it was last year, 47 permits this year versus 48 permits last year. So, with that, that is the Community Development April Monthly Report. Happy to answer any questions.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mike, thank you so much for the different cursor. I was, to me, it was easier to follow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Commissioner Craft.
Mike, I have two questions for you now. With the codes situation you were talking about, are we able to determine what areas it's most prevalent in most of the time, or does it vary?
In terms of where the violations occur throughout the city?
Yeah.
We can certainly plot those and use our GIS software to see if there's certain hotspots around. We don't actively do that every month, but it's a good suggestion that we could look at to try, if we did more proactive code enforcement, we could do some educational things related to that, but given the staff that we have and the historic nature of code enforcement in the city, has always been a complaint-based process, and so really, we don't do any code enforcement activities unless somebody calls in a complaint. And then if our code enforcement officers are out there and witness another violation on an adjacent property, they'll note that as well, but we don't have the staff at this time with only two code enforcement inspectors to proactively drive around and look for violations, but kind of looking at a map or a hotspot of where that code enforcement activity does occur could lead, you know, eventually to some targeted educational community outreach from staff to those residents. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Mike. My second question, I'll refer back to the capital improvements program. Is there anything in reference to ST-61 on Walnut Street improvements? Is there anything occurring for 2023 through 2027 in that area?
I don't know specifically about that section. I do know that the Walnut Street improvements are in the CIP. Councilmember Levissay?
Yes, thanks, Mike. ST-61 and ST-62 were both added to the CIP this year, new. Councilmember Edmondson and myself, as for a handful of years now, have been talking to our Public Works Director, Mr. Sandy, about Walnut Street improvements, but it was never codified in a project, and so he finally sat down and got some estimates on what that might look like. So, there's no particular plans in this particular five-year budget to make that happen, but we actually have a project with some numbers now, which is for the first time in a while, so that's where that came from.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Councilmember Levissay.
Yeah, those are, the new projects at the end of the sheet, I apologize, those are projects that are submitted by the departments in conjunction with Councilmember requests and working through city administration. Those get added into, or they get added to the requests, they're either not funded or funded at this point, but they're just listed as new projects. So, if you look through the projects that are funded for the next fiscal year and in the next five years, those projects always don't add up because they're new projects, and so they may take a little while to show up, but as Councilmember Levissay said, putting it into the CIP budget does, or CIP program does, put it on the radar, recognize the need for funding for that, and then as the funds become available through this year's process, next year's process, that's the determination and the weighing in that gets done and ultimately approved by City Council as to the priority of those projects as they compete with the same number of dollars, or the same kind of concept, is we always have more requests for capital improvements than there is funds available. So, over the past two years, we've kind of seen a switch in that, that in years past, prior to frankly, a lot of the federal funding that came in through the pandemic funding, the number of funded projects was about half of what the unfunded projects list was. So we always had an abundance of unfunded projects in the total CIP. The passage of the Parks and Sales Tax, the continuation with No Sunset on that, plus those additional funds have allowed the city to actually flip that narrative and fund more projects in the last, last year's five-year CIP and this year's five-year CIP. So we actually have more funded projects than we do unfunded in terms of dollar amounts. So, the city recognizes that we'll never quite dig out of the hole. There will always be more maintenance, more equipment to purchase, things of that nature, but there's a very concerted effort to narrow that gap and start funding a lot of those capital improvements, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions for staff? All right, any other business, Mr. Mallon?
Nope, that's it. Oh, we do have a meeting on March 23rd, May 23rd. I'm all screwed up. It's the heat, I swear. It's like 90,000 degrees outside. Feels like June, so, no, we will have a meeting on May 23rd, so we do have cases to bring forward that evening, so look forward to seeing you all two weeks from tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other business by the commissioners? All right, and I would move for adjournment.
So.
To the motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
So, when is your last, when's his last meeting? When's your?